Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for August 10, 2022 to order. The time is now 7:02. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Leagues?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll of council members.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Roxsmith?
Here.
Councilmember Creas?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Excuse me?
Councilmember Holt?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
All right, thank you. Community comments is next. Number one is a review of emails from the public that were sent to communitycomments@mountvernin1.gov, and I'll ask our staff if we received any comments.
There were no comments this week, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Next up is our public comment. So if people are here and would like to make a public comment, you're welcome to at this time. If you would step to the podium and state your name and city of residence, and about three minutes of comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak? You're welcome. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Zach McCown. I'm proud to say I've lived in Mount Vernon for 34 years. So currently Far Island, but it's all one of the same now. So I'm here as a carpenter representative, carpenter union member for 13 years. I had a different script I was going to come over here and talk about, but I received an email. It's very disappointing about the grant, so I'm sorry to hear about that.
Oh, thank you.
So, we were so excited. And I don't know what that steps, where that takes us, but we just want this council to know, whatever we can do to help support it, to get this project going, we're here for you guys. Hundred percent. So I don't know what that looks like. I know me and you could have a conversation later or with the council, but we, my kids would love this. This is something that will benefit everyone in Mount Vernon for years to come. It's the future. So I did want to talk about responsible contractors, things of that nature, and I know you're well aware of that. The underground economy for the members of the council, it's scary. Contractors, they take advantage of workers, primarily Latino workers that we see. I see it every day as a representative. They misclassify them. They pay them wages that they say they're, they don't pay them the wage that they say they were going to. When they start, they threaten to bring, it's a terrible thing. And we just want to make sure and shed light on that, so that this beautiful project, when it gets going, we get building on it, it's dealt with, it's done with a responsible contractor. Someone who the community is going to proud, be proud to say they built that Mount Vernon library. So I don't want to be long-winded here. I'll leave it at that, that you have our support. And whatever we can do to help get this thing past the finish line, we would love to be able to say at the end and cut that ribbon with you.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you.
That's all I have, and thank you so much for your time.
Yep, all right. Other commenters, you're welcome to step up if you'd like to.
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Back on that.
Yeah, please. State your name and city of residence.
Dennis Haller, I live in Blaine. Just want to speak on these brothers right here. All of them are proud of Mount Vernon School Districts, live in this town, and our training center is right here in Burlington, so be dealing with homegrown talent. This project does happen, please consider.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much for the public comment and for the encouragement. There are a lot more grants to come. This would have been just really awesome. So we appreciate that.
Whatever we can do to help, we are a hundred percent supportive.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
All right. Then moving on, consent agenda tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five items. Approval of regular council minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims, dark fiber agreement, and an amendment with Skagit County for TV production. So is there any?
I'd move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under committee reports tonight, first up is Public Works and Library and its council member, Gary Molinar. Gary?
We opened up the Public Works Library Committee tonight at six o'clock. After the approval of the July 13 minutes, we moved into our first agenda item, which was Seattle City Light Skagit Operational Model Flood Storage Proposal. Daryl Hamburg from Dyke District 17 made this presentation and talked about the recertification of the dams with Seattle City Light. This relicense that they're working on would be a 50-year agreement, and what it is dealing with is flood storage behind probably some of the dams, especially Ross Dam. This would be a huge benefit to Down River, because they would be able to hold back some of the water that would definitely affect us in a big flood year. After that presentation, Chris Phillips gave us a presentation on our Cartograph software. This is integrated software that will help unify our Public Works, Parks, Finance, and keep track of our Public Works issues and progression and completions of projects. So give accountability to our city departments and cut costs and time versus the old way doing things with spreadsheets. Next up, Isaac Huffman, our librarian, gave us a quick update on showing us some of the new drawings for, with the new library Commons Project. He also gave us an update on summer reading programs, also dealing with showing us some of the new lighting that is occurring in the old library, so that'll be a definite upgrade. Other things that were discussed were new teacher brochures, an update on the foundation capital campaign to raise funds for this new library. Also talked about the Mount Vernon Migrant Summer Academy Celebration, tie-dye shirts in class called Trial by Flavor, which is a cooking class. After that, we close the meeting at 6:56.
All right, thanks, Gary. Item two is any council member comments. Any council member comments tonight? Okay, moving on, under Mayor's Report, I just wanted to give council a quick update on, I think they'll probably turn it to the slide in a minute. That's okay. They'll still talk. So yesterday, we were blessed with a visit from the FEMA Acting Administrator of Resilience, Ms. Victoria Salinas. She was out from DC. And the story of how we had the attention of DC FEMA is a little bit of a roundabout way in support of the Commons Project. So I had actually reached out to FEMA Region 10 a few weeks ago and asked if they would let us put them as part of our Twitter and Instagram campaign about supporting the city in projects. And so they, and gave them an update on the project. And FEMA is very interested in thinking of themselves as they come help communities mitigate risk, and then they want to see the economic development afterwards. So at the time, they said they were having some visits from DC and would we host the administrator and talk about the resilience of our Commons Project and why we designed it the way we designed it. And so we were thrilled to host them. So the picture that'll eventually come up maybe is of Victoria Salinas. Again, she's number three in FEMA, so we're a pretty high-level official. And then the Regional 10 Administrator, Mr. Willie Nun, and then they brought about eight other folks with them. So we gave them a tour of the waterfront project, of course, set it up for them so they could see it, and then walked from the waterfront back to City Hall and had Julie Blazek with HKP give a presentation about how the architecture of our Commons Project worked. And then we spoke for about 40 minutes afterward and how FEMA could theoretically look at supporting projects like this, because they're looking at the synergy between libraries and shelters and climate, you know, events, whether it's cooling stations or warming centers, or if there is catastrophes, how they're a public institution and they've had really successful partnerships. So I said, well, why don't you give us money for libraries and building them and hardening them as, for those particular reasons. So I just, I always felt really encouraged that they came out because of they wanted to look at those things. And we'll see how our ongoing relationship continues. But it was a, it was a nice visit and felt like we were supported and heard about different policies that could make communities better. So it was a good visit. That's what I had for Mayor's Report. Item D tonight is committee agenda requests. Any committee agenda requests? Council? Okay, moving on, we have no unfinished business and new business. Item A, it's the approval of an agreement with North Sound Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization, and our chief, Chris Kamik, is supposed to be presenting this, so he'll be coming on up.
Sorry about that. I got caught up in all the government business and kind of just went this way over here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me catch up to what I'm supposed to be doing here. Requesting council's approval tonight for the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with North Sound Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization to reimburse costs associated with the police department's Integrated Outreach Services Program. So as a little background, approximately 25% to 27% of the department's calls are linked to behavioral health, demanding significant time and specialized knowledge and skills. The department has come before you before and proposed and received approval to take a different approach from traditional police officer response to these calls by increasing our embedded social worker staffing within the police department. The North Sound Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization has agreed to partner, provide funding for two social worker positions and certain operating expenses. The interlocal would go into effect July 1, 2022, or upon the council's approval. The initial term is through December 31, 2022, but will automatically renew unless the parties agree to dissolve the agreement. The parties have until September 1st of each year to communicate an intention to terminate the agreement, or it automatically renews for the following year. And then recognizing that we're in the startup phase of this, they've given a commitment for multi-year support. So just looking for your approval for the mayor to enter into this agreement.
All right, questions for Chief on this item?
This sounds like it's going to be beneficial for our community, for our budget and for the police department, so I would move the adoption of, or the agreement, approval of the agreement with North Sound Behavioral Health.
Second motion.
Second motion. All right, there's a motion by Mark. I think I heard Juan, oh, Juan seconded, and then now discussion. Sorry, go ahead, Richard.
So this is a cost reimbursement agreement, right? And is it, is it up to $220,000? Is that, there's a budget in the back?
Correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's currently the amount that's projected, and it would cover the two positions that we have funded, and then there's some operating costs that would be associated around that that they would fund as well. And it would just, we would just submit for reimbursement each time we did the expenditure.
And it's a one-year term?
It's one-year renewable, but one of the things that we asked for when, when we entered this was to look at multi-year, because any program or startup and to be able to track staffing for it. And so we have that commitment from them. And also, too, just because we're later getting this agreement in place and we're actually moving, I've even asked them about the fact that the way they're, they got this structured of going basically June to June, and we're on a January to December, will there be any problems with the funding going beyond that? And Margaret Rojas, who we've been working with, says not at all.
Well, thanks for answering those questions. It's another milestone in a great program, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and hold on. Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Release me. I'm really off my game.
We're all a little, you know, it's okay. We have a lot of grace for each other, so it's fine. Item B is the approval of an agreement with Washington State Department of Ecology and our Public Works Director, Chris Phillips, is here. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good evening. Staff recommends council approve the detention pawn maintenance interagency agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology to have Washington Conservation Corps perform vegetation maintenance on drainage facilities. The agreement would be for up to eight weeks for the WCC crews, time and cost not to exceed $39,680. Approximately 40% of the city's maintained drainage facilities need significant vegetation maintenance that requires handwork with remaining facilities needing routine maintenance work. The city has been working with WCC crews since 2015. We currently have approximately 152 drainage facilities within the city. Of those, 40% of the city's drainage facilities need vegetation maintenance that requires small equipment or handwork, so it's fairly labor-intensive. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Ecology for up to eight weeks of Washington Conservation Corps crew time.
All right, questions for Chris on this item?
I have no questions. And if I hear none, I'll motion for council to authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Ecology for up to eight weeks for, of Washington Conservation Corps crew time.
Awesome. Second. Thank you. So a motion by Melissa, a motion by Juan, a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Item C tonight is the approval of a street closure request for the Colson Street Neighborhood Festival. Jennifer Berner, our Parks and Heritage Services Director, is here for this item. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. What I have this evening is a street closure request for Colson Creek Neighborhood, which is home to approximately 2,400 residents. One of the primary objectives of Officer Serrano, who is the officer in that area who services that community a lot, is to foster sense of ownership and community in the neighborhood with these different types of community events. As part of the objective, Officer Serrano is, would like to host the street festival. He's doing this in partnership with the Colson Creek Apartment Manager and the Colson Creek Neighborhood Station, working together to make that happen. The street closure will provide opportunity for the neighborhood and the residents to gather and feel safe in that space while they are hosting this event. The proposed traffic plan has been approved by the police and the fire, so we are recommending that staff, staff is recommending the approval of the street closure. Any questions? Happy to answer those for you.
Any questions for Jennifer?
I have no questions, and if I don't hear any, I'll just mention that it's a great annual event that's happened year over year. And so with that, we can have it again. It'll be amazing. So I'm looking for the approval of the requested street closure for Colson Neighborhood for August 20 of 2022.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Juan, a second by Carrie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And if you haven't walked around on the street fair with Iris, you have missed something, because she will tell, introduce everybody. All right. Item D is the approval of a street closure request for Temperate Habits Brewing Company. And again, Jennifer Berner is here for this item. Jennifer?
So Temperate Habits Brewing Company opened their doors during the pandemic in 2020, and on August 19, they are scheduled to have an event to celebrate their second anniversary of this opening. They will provide the entertainment, a beer garden, and asking for Gate Street adjacent to their establishment to be closed off. You have a map in your agenda there that kind of clearly defines where they're looking to do their street closure. The street closure is to provide a safe location for the patrons while they come in, enjoy this celebration with temporal habits. So with that, staff is recommending that we approve the street closure.
All right, questions for Jennifer on this item?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say that watching the revitalization of our downtown has just been a delight. And so with that, I would make a motion that council approve the requested street closure.
Second.
All right, motion by Melissa and a second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Item E tonight is an approval of an agreement with Skagit County, and Chris Phillips is here for this item as well. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Staff recommends council, city council authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement with Skagit County for the start of a regional local source control program, which is a new requirement of the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. That's a mouthful. In 2004, the city was mandated by Washington State Department of Ecology to develop and implement a stormwater management program in order to comply with requirements within the NPDS Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. The city started that cycle back in 2023. Since 2020, or I'm sorry, since 2010, the city has been working with Skagit County Department of Public Health to informally perform local source control inspections as part of their hazardous waste program. The Department of Health decided to discontinue this regional program, and this new program is with Skagit County Public Works Department. So they basically just transferred responsibilities from health to public works. A regional local source control program is being developed, which we will, which will meet the requirements of the NPDS permit and keep the city within compliance. Annual cost for this is approximately $40,000. The cost over the first one and a quarter years of the agreement is approximately $50,000, and the agreement will be paid out of the surface water utility with this year's approved FY 2022 budget and next year's FY 2023 budget, which is under development now, and that'll be contained within that professional services line item. Staff recommends the city council authorize the mayor to enter into this interlocal cooperative agreement as described above with the Skagit County for the development and implementation of this regional local source control program, which will keep the city in compliance with NPDS permits. And if you do recall, we brought this on two occasions to Public Works Committee, just for your update and consideration.
All right, questions for Chris in a second?
I'd move the adoption of the interlocal agreement with Skagit County.
Thank you.
I will have a point for question, just for, to make sure before I second the motion. And it's specifically on the interlocal cooperative agreement. Just wanted to make sure that I saw this right. For paragraphs 11 and 19 appear to be identical, and just wanted to make sure if that was the intention or if that was a potential error.
This was drafted by the county. They're identical, so it's not going to affect the material terms, but yeah, looks like they just restated. This is the entire complete meaning of your transaction. Because it takes offer and consideration of each other, I would recommend you just approve it as it exists. Otherwise, we'll have to give the county a change of opinion.
Okay, hearing that recommendation, I'll second the motion. Thank you.
All right. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. Any other questions on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item F tonight is the approval of an agreement amendment with HKP Architects, and Chris is filling in for all of his staff, so go ahead, Chris.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends amending the professional services agreement with HKP Architects to provide construction contract administrative services for the Library Commons Project. The Library Commons Project consists of a new public library and community center below three floors of structured parking located across from the county courthouse on Kincaid Street between Second and Third Streets. The library and community center covers approximately 30,000 to 35,000 square feet, structured parking, and will be approximately 125,000 square feet. The project shall incorporate sustainable strategies to reduce overall carbon footprint, promote environmental and healthy materials, and encourage sustainable transportation options such as access to mass transit as well as vehicle charging stations. The project will serve as a gateway to the historic downtown and other regional attractions. HKP Architects is currently under contract for design services for the Library Commons Project, which is currently out to bid for construction. Staff recommends amending their current contract to provide construction contract administrative services to support the construction phase of the project. These services will include, among others, bid administration, responding to frequent, I'm sorry, responding to requests for information, developing of change orders, submittal review, design reviews, and closeout support. These services will augment the daily construction management services and inspection provided by OAC. Motion, city, I'm sorry, city staff recommends the council authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HKP Architects to provide compensation for construction contract administrative services for the construction phase of the Library Commons Project in the amount not to exceed $992,148.24 for a new total contract of $3,659,231.30, pending any of your questions.
All right, questions for Chris on this item?
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HKP.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Melissa and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item G is the approval of an agreement with TranTech Engineering. Chris Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends entering into a professional service agreement with TranTech Engineering LLC for the engineering design services, God bless you, for the Riverside Drive Improvements Project. Note, this combines Riverside Drive Improvements 1 and 2 listed in the six-year transportation improvement plan under a single design contract. This project combines the design for two projects listed in the six-year TIP, Riverside Drive Improvements 1 and 2, from Cedar Street to College Way, and then from College Way to the Skagit River Bridge. This gives the city control over design continuity, but still be able to make decisions on whether to phase construction or to build as a single larger project. Improvements include undergrounding utilities on the west side, except the BNSF crossing, replacing the sidewalks on the west side, several sidewalk spot improvements on the east side, pavement rehabilitation, channelization enhancements, as well as other amenities. In order to track the design effort into the two different federal funding sources, TranTech's fee will be separated into two different schedules, A and B. TranTech is an engineering design firm and was preferred candidate in the selection process among two consultants responding to the advertised request for qualifications. Federal funding was prioritized through Skagit County of Governments, total award amount of $878,000 for design only. The contract fee for this project, if you look at page 60 on Schedule A, is $560,221, and Schedule B is for $490,000, or $490,283, for a total of $1,099,533, or $32. This design team has specific recent experience in utility undergrounding in a variety of commercial corridors within very similar in scope and size to the Riverside Drive Project. They advised the city of a higher level of design required in large undergrounding effort, not fully understood at the time of the grant application. The additional $222,000 will cover any anticipated design costs and will be paid out of the arterial street fund. The total scope and fee of design services is not to exceed that $1,099,532. City staff recommends the council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with TranTech for engineering design services on the Riverside Drive Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed that $1,099,532, upon construction obligations approved by WASDOT, pending your questions.
All right, questions for Chris on this particular item?
I was just wondering if you could repeat all that again. It sounded like a long question, so. I would move, council, approve the agreement with TranTech Engineering.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And again, thanks to Phil Bullock for going after all of these types of funds and coming, actually bringing in more federal funds, so we don't have to pay our own sometimes. All right, item H is approval of an agreement with David Evans and Associates, and go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is in the same light. This is Bill working with SCOG and making money things happen. So this is a great project as well. Staff recommends entering into a professional services agreement with David Evans and Associates for engineering design services for 30th Street Improvements. This project's broken down into two schedules, A and B. Schedule A will provide street improvements from Paul Place just north of the Colson Trail to College Way. The improvements will include raising the elevation of the road north of the trail above the typical localized flood elevation, rehabilitating pavement, extending the bicycle and pedestrian path on the east side to College Way, adding sidewalk on the west side, and it will be, and significant stormwater improvements and adding transit facilities. The bulk of the engineering for Schedule A is paid through a federal STP grant. Schedule B will provide fish passage, or fish, fish passage and stormwater drainage improvements on the Schedule B will provide fish passage, or fish, fish passage and stormwater drainage improvements on the south side of the project along Logan Creek Crossing. Logan Creek crosses Thirty Street through three aging large metal culverts and will be replaced with a fish passable culvert similar to the one that's installed across College Way by WASTOD approximately a year ago. The culvert replacement will trigger the need for approximately two hundred feet of stream restoration both east and west of this location. The drainage improvements will focus on reducing the nearly annual flooding issues impacting the street and reducing pollution generating impacts to Logan Creek. Funding for Schedule B has not been obtained at this time, but funding submittals through NOAA and DOE will be made in October of this year. So we do have an opportunity in August as well to get some grant funding here and we'll be, we'll be working that as well in August. So we've got two shots with, with DOE and NOAA. If this project is successfully awarded funding, the city will proceed with the full scope of the work. If the city is unsuccessful in obtaining funding for this grant cycle, see highlighted paragraph on page twenty of the attached document, the city will negotiate and reduce Schedule B as a separate phase and will place the culverts in a future year and proceed with the Schedule A street improvements. City staff is requesting councils authorize, or authorize the mayor to execute a contract with David Evans and Associates for engineering design services on the Thirty Street Improvements Project in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars upon construction obligation approved by WASTOD. Pending any questions.
Questions for Chris on this?
I have no questions. If you look in the map, it looks like a pretty small area where this construction will potentially take place. But even then, it's, it's a very important area. So I remember during flooding season, how the flood affects that road in particular and all the other things that it will also address.
Sure.
So I'd be honored to go ahead and motion for the first to approve the authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with David Evans and Associates for engineering design services on the Thirty Street Improvements One project in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one upon construction obligations approved by WSCOT.
All right. Thank you.
A second.
Motion by Juan and a second by Carrie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
One additional thing for council member Morales is, is on the east side of that intersection, you'll find a mobile home area that's in there that routinely floods out. So this is another reason to do that is it impacts that community adversely. And this will be a great project to go ahead and rectify that issue.
Absolutely. I agree with you. When I was reading the, the contract, I actually had that thought in mind and I thought, man, this is, this is amazing. So honored to, to make the, the motion for the first.
Again, Bill, Bill Bullock, for the record, I know he's watching, is, he's a magic man, making it happen. So thanks again.
Excellent work to him.
Thank you. All right. That completes our regularly scheduled agenda items. Normally, I turn this over to the city attorney, but the state auditor is now requiring me to say these things. So I'm going to announce that the city council and, and mayor will now meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation. But I am going to ask the city attorney to explain that, what means, what that means with RCW.
Thank you, Mayor. The staff and the mayor have announced that the purpose of the executive session is for legal counsel discussion related to enforcement action, litigation, or potential litigation to which the city, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in either adverse legal or financial consequence to the city pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, subsection one I. That will last until eight oh five.
All right. That means thirty minutes. And if you need to know, that's eight oh five. And I will say that if an extension is required, I will come out of the room in which the session is being held and I will make the announcement that we need more time. So with that, we will be adjourned into executive session.